Paul, speed to orders, move the flag please.
The flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Mr. Boe, here. Mrs. Boyle. Mr. Frandella. Mr. Giannakis, here. Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Pender.
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Here.
Mr. Grinch.
Yes.
Mrs. Panisi.
Here.
And according to terms of the sunshine law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, public library, four newspapers, and tap into on January 6, 2022. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds, inside or outside, at any time. Please silence all electronic devices in pursuant to district policy number 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited in three minutes' duration, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic.
Thank you. A superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Panisi. I'd like to invite our student council president, Sarah Dijala, to introduce our performers for this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I would just like to invite the South Plainfield High School band to perform their holiday selection for us tonight.
One, two, one, two, one, two, three.
Hot colored bells, sweet summer bells, all seem to say, throw cares away. Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to young and old, big and the bold. Ding dong, dong, that is their song, with joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air. Oh, how they bound, raising the sound, or have they dealt, telling them so? Ringing, ringing, while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here. Ding, ding, merry, merry, Christmas. Ding, ding, merry, merry, Christmas. How they send on without end, their joyful tone to every home. Hot colored bells, sweet summer bells, all seem to say, throw cares away. Christmas is here, bringing good cheer to young and old, big and the bold. Ding dong, dong, that is their song, with joyful ring, all caroling. One seems to hear words of good cheer from everywhere, filling the air. Oh, how they bound, raising the sound, or have they dealt, telling them so? Ringing, ringing, while people sing songs of good cheer. Christmas is here. Ding, ding, merry, merry, Christmas. Ding, ding, merry, merry, Christmas. How they send on without end, their joyful tone to every home. How they send on without end, their joyful tone to every home. Ding dong, ding dong.
You know Dasher and Dancer and Prancer and Vixen, Comet and Cupid and Donner and Blitzen, but do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Reindeer.
Had a very shiny nose.
Like a lightbulb.
And if you ever saw him.
Saw him.
You would even say it glows.
Like a flashlight.
All of the other reindeers. Used to laugh and call him names.
Like Pinocchio.
They never let poor Rudolph.
Rudolph.
Join in any reindeer games.
Like Monopoly.
Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say.
Ho, ho, ho.
Rudolph, with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight?
Ho, ho, ho.
Then all the reindeer loved him.
Loved him.
As they shouted out with glee.
Yippee!
Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Reindeer.
You'll go down in history.
Like George Washington.
We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year. Good tidings to you wherever you are. Good tidings for Christmas and a happy new year. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy new year.
Under the direction of Dr. John Frager.
Thank you.
Amazing job, Jazz Choir Group. And now it's time to hear from the orchestra.
I'd like to thank our wonderful orchestra under the direction of Mrs. Dallas Arkea. I'd also like to thank our music directors and all of our talented students who participated not only in tonight's performance, but in the ribbon cutting ceremony on Thursday. You were fantastic, just like you were tonight. Now it's time for a monthly report from student council president, Sarah.
Good evening, everyone, again. I'm going to share some of the events that South Plainfield High School has been implementing throughout the commemorative center. Beginning with on November 30th to December 5th, 2022, 65 students from the South Plainfield High School Music Department traveled to Walt Disney World in Florida to participate in three different performances at Disney Springs as part of Disney's Imagination Campus. This program invites students to become cast members per day and perform at various venues in Disney World. The band, choir, and orchestra also come matronally to commemorate their participation in the program, which is placed during Walt Disney World's 50th anniversary celebration. Secondly, the student council is hosting a holiday spirit week during the week of the 19th through the 22nd. This includes holiday pajamas, Santa hats, and elf ears, holiday characters, and ugly sweater day to kick off the beginning of our winter break. Our student representatives are also leading the decor halls contest in which each class decorates their hallway with a holiday theme. Additionally, the athletic department is still accepting toys for the annual holiday toy drive. We are encouraging students, teachers, and community members to donate new toys to the South Plainfield High School for children and teens in need. More so, the auditorium ribbon cutting ceremony was a great success with musical performances from alumni, the band, chorus, and orchestra. The auditorium is already being put to great use with student attendance at the Broadcasting Club movie nights last Friday showing Home Alone and this Friday showing Elf. And lastly, we would like to congratulate our December Student of the Month, Josh Jacob and Jack McKenzie, for exemplifying leadership and great accomplishment at South Plainfield High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Great job. And Sarah was also one of our featured presenters at the ribbon cutting. We have another very special presentation this evening for one of our South Plainfield police officers and a big part of our South Plainfield school family, Sergeant Malanson. You'll join me on the podium. Right there, perfect. Gotta make sure that everybody gets their... Dear Sergeant Malanson, in recognition of your dedication and devoted service to the South Plainfield School District, the South Plainfield Board of Education, along with our students, faculty, staff, and administration, would like to express our sincere appreciation for your outstanding performance as a school resource officer. During your time as a school resource officer, you have cultivated positive relationships amongst our students, faculty, and staff. The district has come to rely on your innate knowledge and expertise. You have always prioritized the safety and well-being of our students, meeting challenges with compassion and empathy. On behalf of the South Plainfield School District, I would like to congratulate you on your promotion to sergeant and look forward to continuing our relationship in the future. You are genuinely one of South Plainfield's finest. On a personal note, I'd really like to thank Chief Parker, Captain Noonan, and Lieutenant Calucci. When we heard that you were promoted, we were all very excited for you. We wanted it to happen for you, but we were sad that we thought we would lose you and our school district. So whatever you did to maneuver so that we could keep Sergeant Malanson back with us, we really do appreciate it. So now I'm going to ask all of you to come up so that you can have your picture taken as well. Somebody asked me on the other side. I'll get that.
Zach, this is me too. Zach.
Oh, yes.
That's your speech, sorry.
Moving on, have agenda additions and deletions? Public comments on agenda items on later? Okay, moving to board under comments. Oh, public comments, sorry. On anything?
Thank you, Phil. First, I want to congratulate the high school students, the instrumentalists and vocalists. They do a wonderful job every year throughout the year. And if you want to see more, tomorrow night is the high school concert in a brand-new auditorium, which last week's event was very memorable, very inspiring to see what can be built in our buildings with our talented students. Congratulations Sergeant Malanson and employees. Stick around as a resource for our students. There was a great piece in the tab today about Coach Cap, and he had a lasting influence on my son when my son ran cross-country back at high school. I'm sure that others' lives were strengthened by Coach Cap, both on the track and in life. So good luck to the coach and his retirement. And happy holidays to everybody, and we'll see you next year.
I also want to just thank the jazz band, chorus, and orchestra for our fantastic performance here tonight. And thanks to Summer for your monthly updates, keeping us alive on what's going on at the high school. And congrats to Sergeant Malanson for your promotion. I'd also like to just say that High School Board of Tory Ribbon Cutting was a wonderful program as we have a look back in time. Thank you to all for involved in putting the program together, and a special thank you to Dr. Tansy, who said, "Felicia, what have you done?" And to Tom Wiggins for the beautiful job they did with the school. The 2023 Sun Hero's Dinner will take place on March 17th at this time. It will be an in-person event, but could change, but is subject to change if necessary. We're looking at various facilities to hold it. We haven't made a decision yet, and more than likely this year, the number of attendees will be limited, but there'll be more probably in January. And the other thing, I want to just wish everyone a wonderful, joyful, safe holiday season. Thank you.
I just want to echo what you said. Congratulations, Sergeant. Congratulations to all of our musicians, and stay a healthy, happy holiday, everybody. See you at the next meeting.
I just echo the remarks of my colleagues on days here, but I'd also like to let you know that I chaperoned that trip to Florida, and I can tell you from first hand knowledge that all of those kids that you saw tonight and all of those teachers, they did a fabulous job, and South Plainfield can be very proud of their performances. And I thank all of the folks who put all the time in and all the teachers who helped to make that happen, not only on the trip, but every kid got a bunch of academic subjects that they had to make up, and it's a collective effort of the school to bring something like that together. And the parents and the chaperones and everyone else on that trip was very successful. I saw it firsthand, and happy holidays to everyone.
I want to echo everything you said. Congratulations to students. I always look forward to... That was my sixth year now seeing that. It's great. And Zach, congratulations, promotion, and happy holidays, everybody. I'll be the first to say, Merry Christmas, not afraid. Merry Christmas.
Congratulations to Sergeant Malanson. Congratulations to all of our musicians, and great job. And we do have a few more winter concerts, so wishing them much success in the next week or so. And happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and Happy New Year's. Hope I'm not missing it. Thank you.
All right. I'll do my 12 now too, because I think we're not going to see anybody much until come out. A great job, our students, the musical students. It was fantastic. The same thing like ribbon cutting. It brought back a lot of memories for me with my plaid jacket up there. But it was well done, and just echoed with Sharon was saying, and Ms. Wiggins, and Maureen, and great job. And Zach, congratulations, all deserved, and I'm happy they worked out something for you to stay with us. And Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everyone, and look forward to another great year next year. Thank you. Moving on to executive session. Resolve pursuant to the Public Peace Act that the board meets a closed session at this time, discuss confidential matters pertaining to student matters, personnel, and returning client privilege. Be it further resolved if matters discussed in closed session shall be made public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Okay, we're in executive session. How long do we have, 40 minutes, if anyone wants to stay around for the second meeting?
Senator Carroll.
We should do it to us the night before Christmas.
Okay, back into our meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe, here. Mr. Frandella.
Here.
Mr. Giannakis.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Pender.
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Here.
Mr. Cassio.
Yeah.
Mrs. Panisi.
Yes, here. Before we move agenda, we just have a couple changes. On personnel, on 3, 1, we're taking in, we're still allowing to put Dr. Tansy in it, and that will replace it, the library piece. And then you have the resolution to add?
Yeah, we'll add this resolution under, I guess, Students, number letter G. And we'll re-resolve that after consideration of the information presented by the parents during this case, with each ID appeal in case number 236978SPH10262022. As starting executive session, the Board of Education hereby affirming the administration's HIV determination pursuant to board policy and applicable law, and be it further resolved, the superintendent is directed to provide ready notifications to the parents of the board's decision.
Motion to add?
So that's going to be added.
I don't think we'll move that, because we're going to prove the whole agenda.
Right. This is just going to be included in curriculum and student activities, letter G.
So it's in addition to G.
In addition to G. There's nothing in there now, it would be add to the last one in here.
Oh, you put it...
Yes.
Put it in as G.
Okay, G. Yeah, I'll send it out with the 1.
Do you have a motion on approval of agenda? So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Boe.
Yes.
Mr. Frandella.
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pender.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Mr. Cassio.
Yes.
Mrs. Panisi.
Yes. Do you have a motion in adjournance, COW? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All closed?
Okay, we're moving on to our regular meeting. Have some to reply, please.
The flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe.
Here.
Mrs. Boyle.
Here.
Mr. Giannakis.
Here.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Pender.
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Here.
Mr. Cassio.
Here.
Mr. Panisi.
Here.
And of course, in terms of the sunshine law, adequate notice of this meeting was posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, public library, four newspapers, and tap into on January 6, 2022. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds, inside or outside, at any time. Please silence all electronic devices in pursuant to district policy number 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited in three minutes' duration, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic.
Thank you. Any agenda additions or deletions? Any comments on agenda items, I hope? Do you have a motion to approve in 4 minutes? Move.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Brownell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Superintendent's report.
Mrs. Miller is going to be giving us a data report. Thank you. The current seniors took the New Jersey graduation proficiency assessment in March of 2022. I need to review the scores with everyone. As of now, there is no graduation requirement, excuse me, there's no graduation assessment requirement for this senior class, so the test ended up being a pilot. This test will be given again in March, and it is meant to be a replacement for the NJSLA assessment requirement. But as of now, you can see that South Plainfield is comparable to the state. That's really the only data that we have. It's the first time the test has been given. There's no roll call work data or anything else to analyze. Parents received information that students were either graduation ready or not graduation ready. And so as you can see, we're connected with the state, and we're doing a great job. That is everything. Thank you. That's the entire report.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on curriculum sectors, A through G, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Brownell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Personnel, 1 through 4?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Brownell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Finance, 1 through 16.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Both?
Yes.
Mr. Brownell?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes, but it's staying on number 12.
Mr. Fender?
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg?
Yes.
Mr. Cassio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Any vote comments? Any item? Seeing none, any board member comments? Any item?
Okay. Just want to say happy holidays, everybody.
He said it before. That's what we did. That's what we did. No, no. In case someone missed it before. Everybody good? Okay, I have a question adjourned.
I'm sorry.
Motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Needs adjourned. Happy holidays, everybody. Merry Christmas.